Good evening and welcome to the September twenty-six, twenty twenty-three, seventy-seventh voting set, voting session for the mayor and city council of the city of Hagerstown. This meeting is now called to order. We'll have invocation given by Councilwoman Burnett and then following right behind that, pledge of the flag, so please stand.
We gather here together. We gather together here today intent on doing good work. We seek to represent fairly and well those who have given us this task. May our efforts be blessed with insight and guided by understanding and wisdom. May we always act in accordance with what is best for those who live and work in our beloved city of Hagerstown. Bless this meeting today, all those present, as well as the lives of, as well as the lives of those we will encounter afterwards. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to your republic, your which extends, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Announcements, rules of procedure effective since December fifteenth, twenty twenty. Use of cell phones during meetings is restricted. All correspondence for distribution to elected officials should be provided to the city clerk and should include a copy for the city clerk for inclusion in the official record. Our meeting schedule for October is Tuesday, October third. We have a work session at four P M. Tuesday, October tenth, we have a work session at four P M. Tuesday, October seventeenth, work session at four P M. And then Tuesday, October twenty-fourth is our regular session at seven P M. There is no meeting on Tuesday, October thirty-first. And then first up, we have some appointments. And first I will do Hagerstown Youth Council members and that's Shrada Bista, Vista, Xander Heim, Lois, Louis, Machula, Alay, Orendorf, Jessica Ramos, and Anaya Russell. Would you guys please join me in the front?
Can we go ahead and vote them?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Sorry.
Madam Mayor, hereby move to appoint those individuals that you just said to the Hagerstown Youth Council. All terms to expire on September twenty-sixth of twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor.
Aye.
Those opposed. Motion carries. That's how excited I am.
Just move right on to it.
Yes, do that one right now.
Do that one right now.
And can I have a motion for Board of Trafficking and Parking term to expire September twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-seven?
Madam Mayor, hereby move that we appoint Kathleen O'Connell and David Haller to the Board of Trafficking and Parking, term expires September twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-seven.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. First, the Youth Advisory Council. Hi. You guys nervous? No. Okay. You're not being able to see you. Okay. And so I want you to raise your right hand and when I get to the blank, you're just going to say your name and say it like you mean it, right? Like say, say your name. And then when I get to execute the office of, you guys will say Hagerstown Youth Advisory Council, together. Hagerstown Youth Council, full of bloopers. You see that? You guys ready? Okay. I. Say I. Hold on, let's start all over again. Let's get it all out. I'm goofy too, so it's okay. All right. So you're gonna say I and then your name, all right? I.
I.
Do swear.
Do swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
And that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution.
And support the Constitution.
And laws thereof.
And the laws thereof.
And charter and ordinances.
Charter and ordinances.
Of the city of Hagerstown.
Of the city of Hagerstown.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of.
Execute the office of.
Hagerstown Youth Council.
Hagerstown Youth Council.
According to the Constitution.
According to the Constitution.
And laws of this state.
And laws of this state.
Congratulations. Now each one of you guys, you come over and sign the book. How about I move it right here? And sign beside your name. It's a big deal. You can't, I don't think I can say something. Let's see if I remember who's who. At least after meeting, you guys come out of this first, let me see. And if it's not you, just pretend and make me feel good. All right. There you go. All right. You know, it's picture or we'll.
Picture, yeah.
Okay.
Do you want all the picture?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Really tall in the back, so don't try to hide. You're a tree.
Yeah, can we get a little tighter if we can?
Tighten up, tighten up.
Okay, we're gonna do twice. Good smiles, one, two, three. Everybody keep their eyes open. Good smiles, one, two, three.
Stay here for appearance.
Yes.
You're politicians now. You tired of smiling? I am. Ms. Kathleen O'Connell. How are you?
Good.
Okay, good to see you. Hi, Kathleen O'Connell.
Hi, Kathleen O'Connell.
Do swear.
Do swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful.
And that I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland.
And bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And the charter and ordinances.
And the charter and the ordinances.
Of the city of Hagerstown.
The city of Hagerstown.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
The best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of.
Execute the office of.
Board of Traffic and Parking.
Board of Traffic and Parking.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for your service.
Picture.
Picture. Is it me?
No, you're fine. We're just getting prepped back here.
Picket smiles, one, two, three. One more. One, two, three.
Yeah, you definitely could go. His fun stuff is over.
Thanks for coming.
Next up, we have a public hearing, Z T dash two zero two-three dash zero-two, Land Management Code text amendments.
Steve, before you start, I'll give you that oath. Raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear or affirm under the penalties of perjury that the responses given and statements made will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
Stephen Bachmiller, Hagerstown City Zoning Administrator, and this is one East Franklin Street, Hagerstown. I'll begin.
I can't hear Steve. Steve, I can't hear you.
How about now?
That's better.
Okay. And I'm just waiting for the presentation to appear on the screen. Cue the text app. Okay, I'll start then. This is a public hearing for the second text amendment package this year. Normally, we only do one, but this year we're doing two because some stuff came up that needed to be addressed in the short term. This is zoning text amendment case twenty twenty-three oh-two, public hearing of September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three. To give you some background, the Land Management Code amendments, excuse me, the Land Management Code is chapter one forty of the city code. It is a consolidation of four previous standalone ordinances, including zoning, subdivision of land development, floodplain management, and forest conservation. Together, they're known as the Land Management Code. Typically, the Land Management Code amendments are reviewed and proposed on an annual basis. For this package, there are eleven proposals, which will be enumerated individually, individually later in this presentation. Okay, the planning commission's role in this, the planning commission held a public review meeting on July twenty-sixth. We received one comment from an interested party requesting an additional amendment to prevent placement of recreational equipment, et cetera, on residential properties and yards that front on a street. Staff also recommended a minor tweak to the proposal regarding nonconforming two-family dwellings and townhouses for the purpose of clarity only, and that was in issue twenty-three, twenty twenty-three dash oh-six. The planning commission determined that the public input request required further study, and another advertised public review meeting would be required if the commission was, decided to move forward with that request. The commission agreed to staff's revision on that one issue and proposed twenty twenty-three oh-six and voted to forward the recommended proposal amendments at their August ninth, twenty twenty-three meeting. So the one item that a member of the public did testify about was an interest specifically of their own. It was not addressing a specific proposal as part of our initial package, and the commission decided to move forward with the package as is and look at that other issue at a later date, because otherwise we'd have to go back and re-advertise and have another hearing. And with that, I am going to turn the presentation over to Kathy Marr for the first issue.
Good evening.
Okay. Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm under the penalties of perjury that the responses given and statements made will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. And state your name and address, please.
Kathy Marr, Director of Planning and Administration of City of Hagerstown. One East Franklin Street.
Thank you.
All right, the first item in this package, and just in case you're worried that planners can't count, we're starting with number five because we already did a package earlier in the year that was the first four. So today, we're starting with five. And so the first one is to make adjustments to neighborhood mixed-use zoning district standards. We want to do this to be more consistent with observed successful developments and other jurisdictions with similar regulations. Currently, the regs say that if a property is over five acres, you must have more than one dwelling unit type in a development in the N M U zoning district, which is the neighborhood of mixed-use district, and that only thirty-five percent of the units can be apartments, and that no more than fifty percent of the apartments can be apartments and townhouses. And that if there are any mixed-use buildings, which is a building that has ground floor commercial with apartments above, then those, the units in those buildings will not be counted towards the apartments percentage cap. So the proposal that we have before you that has been reviewed with the planning commission as well as a third-party developer that was interested in doing your project in the city and felt that the standards that staff had come up with that are currently in the code are kind of inconsistent with what other people see in jurisdictions around Maryland. And so what's being proposed is for tracks from five to forty-nine acres in size, you must have at least two dwelling unit types, and if it's over fifty acres, you must have at least three dwelling unit types. And then a maximum of fifty percent of the total dwelling units could be apartments. Again, though, if you have mixed-use buildings with ground floor commercial apartments above, then the apartment percentage cap could go up to sixty-five percent. And on the side of that slide over there with the example that shows you what some other developments have, like Collegiate Acres, has three unit types and it's forty-eight percent apartments. Portland is three unit types and it's sixty-eight percent apartments. A proposal that we've reviewed for the large tract, which is the Harrison property behind the old Sheraton, which is now, you know, a car storage lot on the dual highway, would be three unit types, including mixed-use buildings, with sixty percent of the units being apartments. The other examples are all from the Frederick area, and again, shows three unit types. At Waverly View, P N D in Frederick, three unit types, fifty-six percent apartments. Canterbury Station, three unit types, forty-four percent apartments. Mormons Mill, Frederick, three unit types, twenty-seven percent apartments. And then Monocacy Center, two unit types, seventy-eight percent apartments. The other, another idea is include performance standards addressing adjacent development. This is something that's required for planned unit developments, but for the neighborhood mixed-use standards, it's silent. We thought that we should, for these developments, they should at least meet that as well, and that would be, include language that's already in the planning and development section to say that housing developments on the perimeter of an N M U development, you have to either be the same or lesser density type, like if it's single families on the outside, then the edges of the neighborhood mixed-use should also be single families. Or leave a, have a thirty-five-foot-wide forested buffer to provide a buffer between the existing development on the outside and whatever's being proposed on the new development. Third, would require certain minimum recreational amenities, amenities in not only the N M U, but our four residential districts, if a public park is not within a quarter mile. A comprehensive plan for the city recommends that you shouldn't have to go more than a quarter mile before you have a public park if you're in a residential neighborhood. And so currently in the regs, what we have, and hardly anybody ever reaches this threshold, if a development is ten units per gross acre or greater, you have to have twenty percent, twenty percent of the total tract be in open space. And if it's ten to twenty, and then twenty-five percent if it's over twenty units per acre. And so why isn't the density threshold met? Well, see the photos on the right. It's because of forest conservation requirements and stormwater requirements. They take up a lot of space, and then it means that then these properties are not meeting that threshold, so they're not being required to have open space. We often encourage them to do recreational things, but the code's not requiring it. Whereas if you have a planned unit development, you have to set aside ten percent for open space. And in a cluster development, you get to have smaller lots, but you have to make up for whatever, whatever the reduction is from the normal standards to what you're doing in a cluster, that has to be set aside as open space. So really, you're only getting open space mandated with a cluster development or P U D currently. So, and here's some examples. Fairchild Heights, which is a pretty small development, and it's at five point six units per acre, no amenities. Court Park, which seems incredibly dense, but there's a huge amount of forest conservation on that property, so they're only at seven point eight units per gross acre, gross acre, but they do provide a tot lot and a pool. Burghens Village, which is a brand-new development that's just finishing up, is at eight point five seven units per gross acre, and they have provided or will be providing a tot lot. Cleveland Commons, which is on South Cleveland, which is a very small townhouse development, is at eight point seven four units per acre, no amenities. So what we're proposing is if, if the development is not within a quarter mile of a public park and it's under ten acres, you have to at least have walking and biking paths. If it's to ten to twenty acres, you have to have walking and biking paths, picnic pavilions, and a tot lot. Over twenty acres, at least ten percent set aside for usable open space and recreational amenities. This is matching what the requirement is for planned unit development. And here are some examples. Brook Meadow Town Homes, which has an approved development plan but not developed yet, is nineteen point three seven acres, and they're proposing a tot lot, but they also, with this new provision, wouldn't be required to do anything because they directly abut Pangborn Park. Cleary Hill, which is the Housing Authority's development out on West Washington Street, is twenty-seven acres. They have provided two tot lots, a playground, a multi-use field, and a clubhouse. Fountainhead West, another proposed development on Haven Road, which is fifty-four acres, they are proposing, they have a development plan approved, but nothing has been started. They're proposing two tot lots, walking biking paths, a linear park, and then a portion of the development is within a quarter mile of Hamilton Park. Collegiate Acres, which is an existing development up off of Terps and Salem Avenue, is eighty-one acres. They have a dedicated public park, which is Terrapin Park, a clubhouse, a pool, pavilion, and walking biking paths. And then the Boss Center Tract, the annexation that just came in August, the planning commission has reviewed a concept plan for this development. It's eighty-two acres, and they are proposing a tot lot, a gazebo, walking biking paths, dog park, multi-use field, and they are also adjacent to the Jonathan Hager Elementary School Playground, which is open to the public. So in this case, we are getting some nice amenities, but the code doesn't require it. So we're proposing to revise the code, so if we're dealing with a developer who does not want to provide open space recreation amenities, the code will say, well, you've got to provide at least this much. And that is it for that portion.
Okay, moving on to issue number six. This is regarding nonconforming residence exception. Article four, section M eleven of the zoning ordinance allows nonconforming duplexes and certain townhouses that are nonconforming not to expire due to lot area and lot width requirements, not meeting current requirements. And it allows the reconfiguration of duplexes and townhouses to their original construction on undersized lots that may have had units combined. What this proposal does is that it clarifies that the buildings must have been originally constructed as a duplex or townhouses, and does not apply to later conversions that added units to existing buildings. This was recommended to the city attorney as, by the city attorney as a result of a recent administrative appeal. Hagerstown has a lot of duplexes, we're a duplex city, probably have a higher percentage of them than a lot of other municipalities. But they were built like that, and a lot of them were on lots that are below our current lot area and width requirements if you were to build them new. Well, if they sit vacant, technically, they become, they're a nonconformity, and if they stay vacant, they become expired. Well, what do you do with them? In the past, in a few cases, we've required them to actually convert it to a single-family home, because you're allowed at least a single dwelling unit. That's not real practical as far as providing affordable housing and also just the architectural jerry-rigging that goes to a house like that if someone was to try to convert it to a single-family home. Doesn't make a lot of sense. We provided several years ago an exception in the ordinance where if you had a duplex like that, built like that from the start, you're allowed to keep it even if it's at vacant on an undersized lot for beyond a period of, of the nonconforming use expiration. We had someone who had a house that was converted into a family dwelling that was making that argument, and we successfully defended the proposal. We lost the appeal, but we thought there ought to be some clarification in the ordinance on this issue. Number seven is clarification of the motor vehicle sales and rental facility design standards. This proposal clarifies when the standards will apply to a proposed new or existing expanding automobile sales and/or rental facility. It closes a loophole that allows existing operations to expand without considering the design requirements or adds additional uses to the site. If you have a long-established car sales facility, you're not subject to these design standards, but we ran into a situation where somebody had one of these small, long-existing facilities, and they wanted to add additional new uses to further intensify the site, and there was no way to claw back in the ordinance, the ability to at least retrofit something on the property. So this basically closes a loophole in that respect. And the illustrations that we have here are the car sales facility down on Wilson Boulevard, which was one of the motivators at the time this was adopted. This photograph is several years old, but you've noticed that cars are sitting across the sidewalk, things like that. These are issues that the design expectations were put in place to address as new facilities come and work. The lower photograph is the one that's over on West Washington Street, I believe that is, across from the C V S. It was a car dealership for many years. It went vacant for a while. They wanted to reestablish it, so they had to do a few things. The planning commission is very flexible in retrofitting these sites, but at least there's something on site where it's before, it was just literally asphalt, property line to property line. So, so far, these standards have been working well, and they've been administered very flexibly in existing or recently used facilities. Number eight is vending machines and A T Ms on residential properties in mixed-use districts. Our mixed-use districts do allow for retail sales, and that doesn't exclude vending machines. We actually have it listed as a use permitted by right in our commercial areas, including our mixed-use districts of C C M U and N M U. But what this proposal does is it closes a loophole in the zoning ordinance that currently would permit dwellings located in the C C M U or the N M U district to install vending machines in their front yard for public use, since this use, sales, is a permitted use in these districts. This provision also adds A T M machines to this regulation. This serves to protect the character of the parts of the mixed-use districts, which are predominantly residential in character. We have areas in our neighborhood mixed-use in our C C M U that are mostly residential in character, but the zoning allows for commercial sales. So you could have a block of houses, and then somebody decides to put it in the zoning ordinance for if it's that. Number nine is parking requirements for new assembly uses in existing spaces. The zoning ordinance does not provide for requiring new parking assessment when a new use permitted in the zoning district goes into an existing space. This is rarely an issue, but recently someone proposed a nightclub in a space that had very someone proposed a nightclub in a space that had very little parking. This provision requires six assembly-type uses, such as banquet halls, theaters, nightclubs, and sports wagering facilities, to comply with the parking requirements of the zoning ordinance, even when they're going into an existing building. And when compliance, in this particular case, the way we have it written, does not preclude them from applying to the Board of Zoning Appeals. If they have a unique set of circumstances and an argument to be made, they're not precluded. There are certain things in our zoning ordinance where you're just, you have to provide it regardless, and you don't have an option to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Here, we thought the best route to go was to say compliance, but in theory, if somebody has an argument for variance, it does, does not keep them from applying. And it also doesn't mean the BCA will or will not grant it either. It would be on a case-by-case basis, depending on the argument. But at least they have to address it one way or the other. Proposal number ten, this is actually the most comprehensive one that we have in this package. This proposal clarifies vagaries and peculiarities in how the Board of Zoning Appeals addresses administrative appeals, and provides more details on how to address several, several issues relating to nonconformities. It also develops the procedure for hearing and administrative appeal in more detail. Specific references to advertising requirements are removed and replaced with a statement about complying with the state law. Another place that we found, we changed another area in the ordinance a year or so ago, where we found that our written ordinance requirements actually exceeded state law. We can do that by policy. We don't need to have that written into the ordinance. So we just, we're stepping it back to where the ordinance says you have to comply with state law. If the city wants to do additional things by policy as far as advertising and stuff, we can do that by policy and not run afoul of our ordinance if something was to go amiss with a particular case. But our, the city of Hagerstown is actually extremely accommodating compared to other jurisdictions in how we deal with nonconforming or grandfathered uses. We have multiple ways within our ordinance that you can change and expand those uses, and the language that we've been carrying for twenty, at least the twenty years that I've worked for the city, has, they're archaic. They're, they're, they're rather vague. So the idea is to clarify them, to specify, which we, it's not really new policy, but it's clarifying what the board has always taken into account for those particular uses, but it spells them out more clearly and more concisely. Number eleven is parking requirements for child daycare centers. This provision codifies parking requirements for new child daycare centers to be built to provide one off-street parking space for each five children based on the maximum number of children cared for at one time with adequate drop-off area. Currently, it's not specifically addressed in the ordinance, requiring referral to the ITE Parking Generation Manual. We have two pages of parking requirements in the zoning ordinance, and not every use that could be conceived of is listed in that. For that, it directs me as zoning administrator to refer to the Institute of Traffic Engineers Parking Generation Manual. It's a book about this thick with a bunch of studies to figure out what is appropriate, and then I have to make a determination. Here, it just cuts all that out. If you're going to build a new child daycare center, this is your parking requirement, and we don't have to get into that. And it's a fairly common use, so we thought it ought to be added to our list of, two-page list of uses that we have specific codified parking requirements for. Number twelve is create a slate of pre-approved street names to ease the subdivision process. This provision permits the city to arrange for the preapproval of slates of potential street names for new developments in order to reduce a time-consuming step in the development review process. Developers would be welcome to choose from among the preapproval names, preapproved names. This does not, however, preclude them to want to go, if they want to go through the processes, it is now to propose their own. They're still more than welcome to do that. But what we're trying to do is make things easier for developers who really don't care what the names in their subdivision, the streets are in their subdivision. The problem is, is that to actually go through the process, through the multiple agencies, to get approval of street names takes a while in the multi-jurisdictional process. So this allows, puts the enabling legislation in the ordinance, allows us to explore with those other agencies, such as County 911, et cetera, the ability to see if we can create pre-approved slates of names, and that way they can just pick from them. We're not exactly sure how that'll work out, but at least this gives us the authority to move forward with exploring it. Number thirteen is exempting ornamental banners from sign requirements under certain conditions. This provides an exemption for the use of banners on freestanding posts and light poles from the sign requirements, as long as they are mostly ornamental in nature. To qualify for the exemption, no more than forty percent of the surface of the banner displays an entity name, logo, or seal, and the banner does not contain graphics or references to products or services on the property. And then number fourteen is to permit commercial local zoning district uses in mixed-use buildings in the RO district in commercial spaces. In our RO districts, we have some buildings that were either built or modified to be a mixture of residential and commercial spaces. This particular building, I'm sure you're all familiar with, this came before you as a local conversion district a few months ago. This is where Monica Wirtman had, formerly had her photography studio. It sat vacant for a good while, and then there was a desire to use it for a convenience store, but it's a residential zoning district. So they had to go through the local conversion overlay process. That was the only tool that was available in that particular case. So what this does is it actually allows for uses that are permitted in the commercial local district, which is a very strictly regulated small commercial zoning district, actually it's mixed use because it also does allow residential in it. But it allows those commercial uses that are permitted in that corner mom-and-pop shop zoning essentially, in these buildings in the RO zoning district. There aren't a lot of them. This is one of them. This is an example of how it would have worked as a special exception with the Board of Zoning Appeals, rather than going through the entire multi-month rezoning process. The number twenty, number fifteen is just a very simple housekeeping item. We found a renegade reference to a preliminary plat in our, in Article Five of the ordinance. We don't use that term anymore, or preliminary plan, we don't use that term anymore. We, when we amended the ordinances a number of years ago, we changed the term to a development plan, and we thought we caught every example of it, but we found this one hiding. So we're just changing a couple of words to, to the correct reference, as it's currently quoted in, in our ordinance. And I just want to point out that typically what we do is also we point out to you what is the net result of our proposals. In this particular case, with the eleven proposals, five of them are clarifications or corrections of the existing text. Three of them are relaxations of existing text, or removes barriers, or permits things previously not approved. Two of them strengthen existing text, and one is a combination of strengthening and loosening. So it kind of gives you a feel for the mix of what we're doing here. We have a tendency and a general policy to try to find ways to loosen the ordinances up and make them as more user developer-friendly as possible. We're not always here just recommending ways to tighten up the regulations and make things harder. We're loosening things in a lot of respects here. So what are our next steps? After you have your hearing this evening, typically you leave the record open for ten days, which I presume you'll also do this evening. At this point, we are scheduled on October tenth to meet with you again after that ten-day period expires to see how you want to move forward with these proposals. And if everything is in order, if we don't get delayed, tentatively October twenty-fourth, it would be an introduction, introduction of an ordinance to adopt the revisions. November twenty-first would actually be the vote, and then they would take effect somewhere around December twenty-first. Like to enter into the record the planning commission file by reference and the certificate of advertisement for this hearing. And if anybody has any questions, they can contact me. My extension, the city telephone line is extension one-three-nine. My email address is S B O C K Miller at hagerstownmd.org. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. The record will stay open for ten days?
And no one signed up for to provide any testimony? So, any questions from the council maybe?
Questions? No? Okay. All right.
Mayor, you might want to just ask the audience, because I understood that some people may want to do a testify, but they may not have signed up. So you might want to just log in.
Is there anyone, is there anyone in the, in the audience for this particular public hearing that would like to speak? All right. The record will remain open for ten days. The next public hearing is ZM dash two zero two one dash zero one, Land Conversion District Overlay Amendment. And that's Joanna Wu, our city planner.
Sophie, raise your right hand. Joanna, do you solemnly swear or affirm under the penalties of perjury that the response is given and statements made will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Please state your name and address to the record.
Joanna Wu, planner, one East Franklin Street. Should I be right? All right. I am here to present the amendment to the local conversion district overlay at Fort Cypress Street. So a little bit about this property. It is located at Fort Cypress Street. It's on the corner of Cypress and Potomac Avenue. The property is nine thousand nine hundred and four square feet, and its current zoning and city is R Mod, which is residential moderate density with a local conversion district overlay. Here's some images from the side street and the front of the property. And this is the proposed site plan. It's very faint, but the outline in red is what is the proposed constructed area. I would, oh, I can zoom in. It's right there. So in 2021, the applicant proposed to expand the permitted commercial uses for the office space. Additional parking and landscaping were also added, which improved the neighborhood and its surroundings. The mayor and council approved the overlay on May twenty-fourth of 2022. Today, in 2023, the applicant wants to amend the overlay to allow front addition and change the uses. They want to construct a three-hundred-and-four-foot addition that would enclose a staircase, add hallway space, and a patient restroom. The second-floor dwelling unit would also be replaced with administrative support offices. The requirements for a local conversion district would be met with the proposed changes. And in, for the May 2023 amendments to the Land Management Code, the first package, it directly allows additions to be built in the front of the building and not just the back, or where it's the least visible in a local conversion district. The Planning Commission held a public review meeting on July twenty-sixth. We had comments from the littles from on Eighth Cypress Street, and they expressed that they were not opposed to the overlay amendment, but had some concerns about parking issues with the adjacent property on Sixth Cypress Street. At this time, I would like to enter into the record the certificate of advertisement and the file by reference for ZM 2021-01. Typically, we leave the, the comment period open for ten days, and I wanted to express that the Planning Commission also recommends approval after they reviewed the amendment to this proposal. And my apologies, it should be October tenth. We, I'll be back here as we'll discuss any comments from tonight's hearing or from the ten-day comment period. And that is all I had for this one.
And no one signed up for testimony for this one either?
Is there anyone in the audience that, testimony for this?
Yeah, I think a lot is.
Okay.
Sophie, would, I'll give you the oath. Raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear or affirm under the penalties of perjury that the response is given and statements made will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Everjanni Eklund. I reside on two-one-five-zero-eight, mounted on the road, Hagerstown, Maryland. And I currently own Potomac Dental Center. We did reside in Fort Cypress Street, and we have, we have plans to create surgical units on Fort Cypress Street where we were. Just the present exterior design does not meet the aesthetic goals that we would like to achieve for ourselves and the city. And, you know, like stated earlier, we have an exterior staircase that really doesn't give the, the look that we would want to be able to have, and we would like to be able to include that, so it has a more balanced look. I believe in one of our packets that you all may have. You'll have that drawing. And you can, you can see how we would, it would just, I feel like that it would be an improvement for our neighborhood to be able to do that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
You guys have any questions, concerns, discussion? All right. The record will remain open for ten days. All right. Joanna, again. And this is a public hearing for annexation of thirteen to seventeen Western Maryland Parkway.
All right, I'm back. I'll be presenting the annexation for thirteen and seventeen Western Maryland Parkway. A little bit about this property. It has a tax map thirty-seven, grid twenty, parcel eight-hundred-sixty-four and eight-sixty-nine. The property is front West Washington Street and Western Maryland Parkway. It is contiguous to the city through the annexation that was currently, that was recently processed in July for two Western Maryland Parkway. And it is outlined in this red and the dark magenta pink color. The current county zoning is ORT, or Office Research and Technology. The proposed city zoning is IMU, or Industrial Mixed Use. It is in the city's medium-range growth area, county's urban growth area, and state's priority funding area. Express approval of zoning is not required by the county because proposed zoning is similar to the current county zoning classification, and the total acreage is roughly ten-point-five-nine acres. A little bit about the annexation plan. Water and wastewater is provided by the city. Electric is provided by Potomac Edison. No significant impact is expected for emergency medical service delivery, and maintenance of Western Maryland Parkway is performed by State Highway, and West Washington Street is performed by the county. This annexation is being processed since it was, the mayor and council entered into a pre-annexation agreement with the previous property owners for these properties in January of two thousand and five. The properties are such, subject to annexation under the terms and conditions of the pre-annexation agreement through the annexation of two Western Maryland Parkway, which the property became contiguous. The City Planning Commission reviewed the draft annexation plan and the proposed zoning on July twelfth, 2023, and recommended approval. And a little bit about the next steps. We have our public hearing tonight, and we'll have our follow-up discussion on the tenth, and potentially approval of the resolution on the twenty-fourth. And if approved, it'll become effective forty-five days after, which is December eighth of 2023. And at this time, I would like to enter into the record the certificate of advertisement and the file by reference for A 2023-03. And usually, we leave the record open again for ten days for public comment. And that's all I had.
And again, no one signed up for testimony for this public hearing?
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak in reference to this public hearing? Discussion? All right, the record will remain open for ten days. We have citizen comments, and we have Ms. Gil Shapiro, Shiro? Shiro, yes.
I don't know how to do this.
Then you step right up to the podium and state your name and address for the record, ma'am.
Yes. I'm recently from Cal-
You can look. You can look down. Yes, ma'am.
From, from California, Donegan, California, one forty-nine Orchard Lane, Donegan, California, nine-five-nine-three-seven. Traveling to the East Coast to relocate. I was born in New York, twenty-seven years in New York, forty-three years in Northern California. I traveled to Hagerstown to stay at Motel Six on June twenty-fifth. I was exhausted. I fell asleep. My purse was stolen with all of my ID, which was unfortunately all together in one small purse, because I'm intending to relocate. So for the last three months, I've been struggling to get some kind of identification. I was able to survive because I had my checkbook. So I was writing checks, which the motel accepted. Unfortunately, a few weeks ago, I ran out of checks, and so I am basically technically homeless. I have bank accounts. I have money in my bank accounts that I have not been able to access because I do not- access because I do not have photo ID. Until this happened, I had no idea how desperately important it is to have photo ID. And unfortunately for myself, I've had every single door slammed in my face because I don't have photo ID. I have long education and work experience. Nobody would accept an application or even talk to me because I don't have photo ID. I still cannot access my own bank accounts because I don't have photo ID. I have just very recently this morning been able to go to social security and they have informed me that they will send me a replacement card within a week or two. I have recently acquired some of my college transcripts from San Jose State University in California, which is a form of ID. I'm working with Reach to get my birth certificate from Brooklyn, New York. I was born in New York, twenty-seven years in New York, forty-three years in California. My purpose here tonight is that for the last two or three weeks, I am homeless. And it is a very strange situation for me, never been homeless before. And coming from the west coast in Woodland, California, there is a huge homeless population there. And here I've encountered also homeless population. I've actually had four nights where I was literally sleeping on the sidewalk because I had nowhere to go and absolutely no cash or money. I've been to social services. I'm waiting for perhaps SNAP benefits. The problem for myself is that I actually have money deposited every month in my checking account. I have a social security retirement and I have an annuity. Unfortunately, I cannot access any of my own money. I've written letters to my banks requesting check replacements, have not heard a word from them. And so I've even been in a situation where I could not, for reasons I do not understand, access my own email account from the library. But I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't intend to speak so much about my own situation. My proposal tonight is there are many people who are homeless in this community and many others around the country. And there are people who literally cannot sleep outside anywhere safely. So my proposal, and I'm very interested in all of the information from the zoning people tonight, I mean, there is literally not a safe place. There certainly, there are not enough accommodations indoors for homeless people, but even, I would like to propose, and I don't know anything about your zoning laws or anything, a substantial slab simply of concrete with a substantial roof and poles with benches where people, maybe nine for men, nine for women, where a person who is homeless, who is prepared to sleep outside, can at least safely sleep outside.
Ms. Shapiro?
I'll be, yeah, I'm sorry.
Ms. Shapiro, I'm sorry, but you have three minutes and-
Oh, I apologize.
So if you could just finish your thought.
Yeah, actually, mostly, it's also very important for bathroom facilities for people who are living on this street. And so just, I was thinking, you know, one on each end, a bathroom for men, a bath, I mean, not a porta potty, but a real bathroom, open from midnight to six AM because there are no bathroom facilities at that time of night for people who are homeless. Thank you for listening very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's the only person signed up for citizen comments. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Ms. Shapiro, I'd like to give you my card. I'd like to talk with you tomorrow if you would give me a call or stop by. So approval of the minutes?
Madam Mayor, hereby move for the approval of minutes as presented for the mayor and council meetings held on August one, August eight, August fifteenth, and August twenty-second, August twenty-three.
Discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of extension of the investment Hagerstown, Invest Hagerstown City Center, is that me?
Consent agenda.
Oh, sorry, consent agenda.
Madam Mayor, hereby move for the all the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Second.
Discussion?
Madam Mayor, I'll be abstaining from this vote. Thank you.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Yeah, they are backwards.
Yeah.
Approve an ordinance expanding Hagerstown Youth Council membership.
Mine's not backwards.
I fixed mine, yeah.
That's why. Alright, thank you.
I know that town member Brucey needs to stay and vote on that one. Who was the first and who was the second?
I was the first.
I seconded it.
Look at us. Expanding youth council, right? Approval of ordinance expanding the Hagerstown Youth Council membership size from five to eleven members, maximum to five to nineteen member maximum, and establishing consistent partner group.
Madam Mayor, I hereby move for the mayor and city council to approve an ordinance expanding the maximum number of youth participants for the Hagerstown Youth Council. The council has received increased interest and current limits restrict the involvement of passionate youth in the city. Expanding the limit would allow for the increased interest and devotion to the city by our youth. Securing continuation of the partner group allows for increased support from community members for the Hagerstown Youth Council.
Second.
Discussion?
I just can't be any more excited about this. This is a, it's a really cool thing to, to establish many years ago and for people to be excited and more engaged and, you know, to expand the amount of members. So congratulations, it's really exciting. And thank you for everything you're doing to expand the program and to keep our youth engaged. So thank you.
I would agree. I love that it's, that it's increased and that there's so many young people that are interested in being a part of making a difference in the city. So thank you guys for your leadership and hard work.
Aye. Oh, we're not voting yet?
Don't you have something nice to say?
Those in favor?
Aye.
I was excited.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approve of ordinance, conveyance of city property and granting a temporary construction easement to the Board of County Commissioners at Crystal Falls Drive.
Madam Mayor, I hereby move to approve an ordinance approving the conveyance of a portion of city property on Crystal Falls Drive consisting of seven hundred and eighty-five, give or take, square feet to the Board of County Commissioners in accordance with the property acquisition agreement. Agreement also includes granting a temporary construction easement. The conveyance of the property is part of Washington County's bridge replacement project on Crystal Falls Drive over Beaver Creek.
Second.
Discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Introduction of ordinance to quick claim alley number two dash eight two A.
Madam Mayor, hereby move for the introduction of an ordinance to quick claim unapproved alley two dash eight two A to Taryn M. Cave and George B. Moss and authorize them to execute the quick claim deed. Staff has determined that this alley serves no public purpose.
Second.
Discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of resolution, approval of an agreement for outgoing loan between the City of Hagerstown and the Washington County Historical Society.
Madam Mayor, hereby move for the approval of a resolution to enter into agreement for outgoing loan for the Washington County Historical Society between the City of Hagerstown and the Washington County Historical Society, Inc. The loan agreement is for a period of ten years commencing on October sixteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of First Amendment to memorandum of understanding with the Board of Education of Washington County for School Resource Officers.
Madam Mayor, I hereby move for mayor and council approval of a First Amendment to the memorandum of understanding with the Board of Education of Washington County for School Resource Officers. This amendment increases the amount of School Resource Officers to one sergeant and is updated to reflect current costs associated with the position. The additional SRO will be fully funded by the Washington County Board of Education.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of memorandum of understanding for access to Rapids Regional Automated Property Identification Database.
Madam Mayor, hereby move for mayor and council approval to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments, National Capital Region Law Enforcement Exchange Program Management Office, and Maryland Department of State Police. This MOU will allow us to have continued access to a database which is used to electronically collect and search statutorily required pawn and secondhand property.
Second.
Discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of extent, extension of the Invest Hagerstown City Center redevelopment grant for forty-nine and thirty-seven Jonathan Street, City Sprouts LLC.
Madam Mayor, I hereby move for the mayor and city council to approve an extension of the Invest Hagerstown City Center redevelopment grant for the renovation project at forty-nine and thirty-seven Jonathan Street to November thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three. The city's original approval was on May twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-one, and this is the third extension to the date requested by the developer. Failure to meet this deadline will result in termination of the attached approval letter and forfeiture of the grant.
Second.
Discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. City and magistrate?
Another busy weekend, Friday, the twenty-ninth, downtown Hagerstown, Thunder in the Square from five to nine. Classic car show, DJing live music by the cruisers, food, and contests. I think there's a classic car, the nicest one, different types of categories. That happens five to nine downtown. Also, scavenger hunt and pub tour Saturday, nine, September thirtieth, two to six, supporting the Human Development Council and Councilman Schindler's favorite event of the year, voltage wrestling in University Plaza. September thirtieth, five to nine, admission is free. Beautiful weather for it, so another big weekend.
Councilmember Asher?
I have nothing. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I just wanted to apologize, I was not able to make the meeting last week. I had a commitment for my employer. I thought my meeting in Myersville was at seven, I ended up being at five, and so I just didn't have the ability to get back and forth between the two, so.
We always miss you.
We missed you, don't believe Bob.
It was a very positive.
With a quick meeting.
We actually, we said, if Kristen was here, we'd still be here, we'd still be talking.
I'm gonna remember that next week.
Councilmember Brucey?
Yeah, I got one thing, and when we were on the School Resource Officer piece, you know, our school resource officers are fantastic, without a doubt, okay? They put up with a lot every single day in the school. The problem is that that does not end in the school. It flows out into the community at times, especially up on Marshall Street where now, I used to only get one complaint, now I'm getting like five. So it's not just one person, it's multiple people who are experiencing this problem. And I, I hope that maybe our SRO up there can keep a little longer watch or better watch out on Marshall Street until like, you know, five o'clock. Because there seems to be problems between two fifteen and five o'clock. That's it. Don't want to bash my HPD guys, but I'm getting a lot of calls.
From Western Heights on.
Yeah.
Councilmember McNabb?
Yes, I, I want to give a special shout out to Chris Summerling. He has been so responsive to all of my folks that I sent to him. Just last week, I got an email about inquiring about a business and I CC'd Chris immediately and the next day, he scheduled a meeting with the gentleman. So I just want to thank him and the whole department for the flexibility with all of our inquiries. Thank you.
Councilwoman McIntyre?
I just want to commend Addie Nardi and the Boys and Girls Club for a very successful groundbreaking last week. And today, of course, it's a bittersweet moment for the community that the Boys and Girls Club has been officially demolished. I know that Mayor Martinez and Councilmember Burnett is, you know, it's very, yeah, it's very near and dear to your heart, but the community spoke and really knew that this center, this new center was going to be very important for the youth, for the individuals on Marshall Street and for, you know, our community as a whole. So it is a great step forward and is going to be a huge improvement to what they're, the existing conditions that they had. So congratulations to Addie and all of the incredible hard work that she and her team and everyone surrounding her has done to get us, get them to this point. So I look forward to the future.
Thank you. Councilmember Schindler?
The only thing I'll add is they were, there is a new amenity down by the Hagerstown Cultural Trail, put on by the Bestrow Community, I hope. There's some new outdoor exercise equipment. So if you weren't aware, go check it out, it's really neat, you know, get a beautiful view of the trail and just one more amenity for public health, so.
Really cool. I just want to say thank you for United Way for their Day of Caring. It was really awesome last week on Thursday to see so many people out in the yellow shirts. But also, it was really cool to help at Kiwanis Park. I was there for fifteen minutes, but I did blow the leaves off the bridge and so-
You did a great job.
Thank you, thank you. That was hard work.
I was a hard worker, but I basically just walked around.
She was supervising. So thank you for all the, the community that comes out and does that. It really feels good and looks good to see community. It just feels like we're on one accord, all out there to care. And so thank you for that. And then on Friday, Citibank, they actually redid nine of the planters outside. And so thank you to Shirley and to her team for coming through. We had a good time with that. Me and Jaheem was out there planting and he, he was putting his hands down in the dirt and he was, he was helping. I said, Jaheem, this is, your job is just to take pictures. He was like, no, I want to plant seeds too. So, yeah, thank you to everyone to help make the city look better in the, in the two days for United Day of Caring. And then also Washington County Boys and Girls Club groundbreaking. I just want to say that that was amazing. It was amazing to be a part of the, the groundbreaking. It's amazing to watch it, you know, go from the gym come down, well, the woodshop, the gym, and then slowly to the teen center and then you start to see the library was gone and then today, the rest of it to come down. But I'm really, really excited that that new facility is going to be able to serve double. And so I feel like Hagerstown, we're getting double for our trouble. We always say there's nothing for the youth to do and what, what about the youth, what about the youth? I feel like the Boys and Girls Club's double for our troubles. So thank you to Team Maryland. Both of our senators were here and our congressmen for that. And that, that just made, made me feel good about the future of Hagerstown. And then also, the outdoor fitness, thank you for coming along with me and Councilmember Schindler for that. Sandmar, and they came in and they had this vision and Keith Fanger said, this was a, this is just a small part of a bigger vision. And so to see housing and the collaboration along with Parks and Recs, so thank you to our staff at Parks and Recs and Economic Development and of course Brittany for all the hard work of making sure to pull these ribbon cuttings and ground breakings and all of this stuff that is happening. And I want to say there is a lot of construction going on. I know I said this last week, there's construction going on, but it's kind of like, we want new things. It's kind of like if you're building something, you have to be careful, maneuver around, take a little bit of extra time, but we're getting new stuff and it's really an exciting time for Hagerstown. And at the same time, I know we have a lot of issues that we still have to face, so try to be kind to each other. And with that, we're joined.